Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. All right, it'll be just the two of us today, so we'll go ahead and start.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right. I will second it. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. And next order of business, we have for the County Engineers' Office, Dan Becker. Good morning.
Good morning. Missed you guys, I haven't seen you in a while.
Yeah.
All right, let's see. I've got three resolutions for your consideration today. First resolution is authorizing Medina County engineer to purchase a new boom mower tractor. The second resolution is approving the annual assessment on improvements for the Wood Hill, or I'm sorry, Woodhaven Preserve subdivision Phase III. The third resolution is approving the final plat for the Woodhaven Preserve subdivision Phase III, and then our weekly permits.
I will make a motion to approve all three resolutions.
I will second the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good day. Next, Amy Lyon Gavin, Assistant County Administrator, I think serving multiple roles for us today, so.
Good morning. So yes, first I'll present the finance resolutions, and then second I'll do the two for the county administrator. For finance, we have seven resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first one is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second is amending the 2021 appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. The third is expenditure adjustments for various funds. The fourth is authorizing the county auditor to transfer funds from various county department accounts to the Medina County Print Shop revenue line item. Fifth resolution is declaring Medina County property as excess property. The sixth resolution is approving an agreement by and between Medina County Job and Family Services and the Medina County Office for Older Adults for Adult Protective Services. And the seventh and final, finance resolution is approving claims for the week in the amount of $1,481,260.23.
I will make a motion to approve all seven resolutions.
I will second the motion. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Thank you. And then subbing in for County Administrator Scott Miller today, I have two resolutions for your consideration. The first is authorizing the allocation of ARP funding for the purchase of conferencing equipment by county departments. This is to promote social distancing and prevent the transmission of the COVID-19 virus. There are six departments listed, and that amount is $116,000 for that allocation. And the second resolution is authorizing a request for proposal process for the Medina County Electrical Aggregation Program supply.
I will make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Next, Hallie Murin, our Human Resources Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have a promotion in sanitary, nine rate increases, six in sanitary, two at Job and Family Services, and one in maintenance, one transfer between departments, three leave of absence, one in maintenance, two in Job and Family Services, return from leave, two return from leaves in Job and Family Services, and one resignation in sanitary.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second the motion. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Next, Jeremy Senko, our sanitary engineer. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Jeremy.
Three resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing a one-year extension for the lawn maintenance services and snowplowing services contract for various Medina County facilities. The second is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into agreement with Dixon Engineering for Professional Design Services to design and bid a new elevated storage tank located in York Township. That'd be the Fen and Marx Tower project. And the third is authorizing the execution of an agreement for the county to purchase real property, and that's the property on Boston Road.
I'll make a motion to approve the three resolutions.
Second the motion. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good, thanks. Next, we have the commissioners' resolutions. I'll jump on, just go ahead and do those. Reappointing members of Medina County Revolving Loan Fund Committee. This appoints Ralph Berry as legal representative, Debbie Kylie, low and moderate income segment representative, Keith Hughes, finance accounting representative, Scott A. Miller, local bank representative, Scott Miller, Board of County Commissioners representative. It's kind of odd, okay.
We have actually a third Scott Miller.
Oh my gosh, that's true. Lakota, I think it is, but anyway. Amy Lyon Gavin is County Administration Representative, and Dino Shuley, private business representative.
You gonna do both of them, or?
Oh, yeah, and we also have reappointing a member to the Medina County Advisory Council on Aging and Disability, Sue Boggs, appointing, and for that term expiring September 30th, 2024.
Make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
I'll second the motion. If we could only get that third Scott Miller on there, that would be a trifecta.
I think he's on Metropolitan Housing Board.
Yeah, so we can find some way. Anyway, all right, roll call, please.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Next, we'll do department updates. Greg Brown, our County Home Superintendent.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, starting with census, we're at 40 residents currently. I have one candidate that I'm working with this week that he should become a member of the home here by the end of the month. We have four active participants right now in the adult daycare. Still shortages are the part-time first and second shift LPNs. I keep running into all these nurses, and I just keep giving them the pitch about where they should work. For capital improvements, I've been working with Stephen on the boiler as being the first part of the two-part program. Some of the collaborations with the Medina Health Department. For next month, we are working on getting our booster shots for our residents and staff, and then also the flu shots. The Lafayette Fire Department does our basic life support and CPR classes, they're doing those next month as well. Still having a great relationship with the Medina Square, Farmer's Market. The corn is very well received by the residents, they were really enjoying that over the weekend. And then also, Feeding Medina County and Aramark really helped us with a good problem that we had, which was storage of all of the meat that was volunteered from the auctions, from the fair. Upcoming events, working with Office for Older Adults, they've got their Hawaiian luau. I know my residents will be going to that on the 10th. The bookmobile from the library, on their voyage maiden, their maiden voyage, it broke down and they never made it to us. So, on the 13th of this month, we'll see the brand-new bookmobile at the home, it's gonna be exciting, there'll be pictures. And then also, on the 21st, our residents try to give back, and so they volunteer at Feeding Medina County. They've also got a good problem, they've got so many volunteers this year that normally our guys would go monthly, and this time we've got one month out of the year so far that we can go, so what a great problem. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Now, the booster shot you're talking about is for COVID, correct?
Correct.
Now, has that date been moved at all, when that'll be available?
You know, I was reading the paper, and kind of, I was like, hmm, well, as of the last email that I got, that we were set up still for them to come and do it, so I gotta get back with them and see if that's still, that's still on.
Okay, all right.
Great, thank you.
Well, thank you, appreciate it. Denise Testa, our Planning Services Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, so between January and August, we have had 25 major subdivisions with 400, or I'm sorry, 742 sublots, 33 minors with 63 sublots, so we are well over 800 sublots for both minors and majors. For September regarding the planning commission, we are hosting a special meeting this September for a revised preliminary plan, so that that can move forward a little quicker, rather than wait until October. For our September concept plan meeting, very exciting news, we are reviewing the Bohaty Development Project on Pearl and Reagan. That is 130 acres with 75 single-family lots and 185 single-family attached units. So we're very excited to see that, that's actually a large, that's gonna really put us over close to 1,000 sublots for the year. For our October meeting, we are reviewing the Lakewood, I'm sorry, the Redwood Lake Road final plat in Lafayette Township, which is right off of Technology Lane, as well as a York Township text amendment. It's important to note, today is our deadline, so we may receive a couple more projects before that October meeting. Last month, you had asked about the level of interest from township, cities, and villages regarding the Comprehensive Plan Assistance Program, to see, you know, kind of get a temperature check on what that is. I'm currently gathering information for that, and we'll have that for you next month, so I just wanted to provide you with a quick update. Fair housing presentations, I completed my August presentations on August 31st to the Medina Sunrise Rotary, thanks to Bob Halasko from the Medina ESC for helping me with that. I will schedule additional fair housing presentations for the remaining of 2021 and 2022. Lafayette Critical Infrastructure Grant, that's our bridge replacement. We are exploring the possibility of installing a temporary access drive before winter hits for that, so that's part of the plan. We also, as Steve is very aware of Senate Bill 52, we attended the September 1st webinar, and I'm registered for the September 15th webinar, that is highlighting the Ohio Power Siding Board Process and Public Participation. We are one of the finalists for the NOAC electric vehicle charging station for here, possibly in our parking lot, so I'm currently working with a team here in the county to gather information, and then our next step is to schedule a site visit for that. I also attended the City of Medina Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee meeting this past August. Our next steps really are to launch a community survey and hosting community engagement events, so if there are any Medina city residents, I strongly encourage you to participate in that process, as it's very important for our future, not only in the county, but also our city. And for tonight, I'm looking forward to attending the Chatham Township Zoning Commission meeting, so, based on an invitation from Township trustee Gumbita, so. And that is it.
Wow, that's a lot.
All right, now you can all take a breath.
The special meeting for the planning commission for September, that's for the previously called Bailey Subdivision.
Correct. That is the.
What's the new name?
Highlands at Sharon.
Highlands at Sharon, okay, got it.
That's right, we've upgraded, I guess, I don't know.
All right.
Any questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next order of business, a public comment. Anybody like to come forward? Please, just, wouldn't mind stating your name, address, please? One or both of you, I guess, okay.
Well, actually, we were here in solidarity, she has something to say, and I have something to say, so, and Jerry's here too, so.
Go ahead, just give each your names and addresses, please.
You wanna go first?
Okay.
Good morning. My name's Pauline Chapman, I live at 7328 Worcester Pike Road in Seville, Ohio. 44273 is my zip.
Okay.
I come here today to give a message from also a friend of mine who wanted me to read this message, and I confer with this exactly. I cannot express enough what a relief it was to read a recent comment by one of my county commissioners regarding fracking brine as a commodity, as reported in the Medina Gazette. Please remember that this product has been tested and proven to be extremely radioactive with half-lives of greater than 1,600 years. It must not be used anywhere because of all our water systems are connected, and neighboring counties, states, and counties will also be affected, and repeated use will increase the concentration of this radioactive substance in our water. Additionally, it's likely that the dried product can become airborne and breathed in, and will cause cancer. I hope that our three county commissioners will take the further steps asked for today to keep us all safe from radioactive waste. I have a water system, I live right on Route 3, and if they use that on the road, we know it's gonna leach into my water. And water is life. Thank you.
And this was from one of our members of Sustainable Medina County, Mary Emhoff, who lives in Brunswick Hills Township. She's retired from the hospital system, and she couldn't make it today, so.
Okay, all right, very good.
Okay, thanks.
So I'm Kathy Jones, Sharon Township. I do have handouts for the commissioners, but I'll read this first. Good morning, commissioners. First of all, I'd like to thank Commissioner Hambley for your wonderful quotes in the Gazette last Friday regarding Aqua Salina, that was very helpful. Why your opposition to the use of Aqua Salina is really good news for Ohioans, there are other concerns. One, the two current bills don't specifically state Aqua Salina by name. Two, what about the processing facilities, will they be shut down? Three, shouldn't all liquid deicers and dust suppressants be tested for radioactivity levels? And then Commissioner Hambley, I'm asking you further, to take it one step further by formally requesting you to lobby your former Republican colleagues at the State House to vote against House Bill 282 and Senate Bill 171. If you could do that, that would be very helpful. And then I would also ask you, county commissioners, to send a letter to the sponsors of House Bill 282 and Senate Bill 171, on behalf of Medina County residents, expressing your opposition to these bills. And lastly, commissioners, I think you should be aware, we just received this information. The latest development concerning radioactive oil and gas brine, please review, and I'll send this, I'll pass this out to you, please review the ODNR chief's orders directed to Union Township trustees and Harrison Township trustees concerning the application and disposal of brine. In order to get around the restrictions, the township trustees are now ordered to try to figure out whether they have poisoned the environment. There's a technical scientific inquiry and determination mandated that the trustees don't have any capability to make. No level of radioactive brine is lawful, and the ODNR has been delegated the responsibility of making that determination, but instead they are requiring people with zero qualifications to make it, so I think you might want to review the ODNR's chief's orders, and let me pass this out to you all. So this, hold on a sec, so this is pretty much what I said there, and then the orders are behind it.
And you have one for that?
Thank you, we'll give it to you. Thank you. So thank you very much, and if you could send a letter out or support stopping this radioactive brine in those bills, that would be so helpful, thank you.
We'll be reviewing those.
Yeah, could you let us know what you do, or send me an email if there's, you send anything out or any updates, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Did you want to speak?
Okay. Please state your name, address, please.
Jerry Dulcini, Hinkley Township. I agree with all things that the ladies said, and I'm particularly concerned about the radioactive brine, because my home was built in 1872, before the automobile, and I'm 60 feet away from the road, and the road is higher than my property, and my wellfield is below that. So any radioactive brine is going to run off into my yard and the wellfield, so I'd like to have you consider that on a personal note, and that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else for a public comment? All right, thank you. I do have a, for the record, the notice of a liquor permit filing, a stock transfer. Commissioners, a notice of stock transfer for TA operating LLC, doing business as Quaker Steak &amp; Lube, 4094 Pearl Road, Medina Township, Medina, Ohio. The commissioners are not requesting a hearing on this matter, and this notice is being provided for the record, so. All right. We do have a, I guess, a request for executive session after discussion.
I will make a motion for executive session after discussion session to consider the compensation of a public employee.
All right, and I will second it. Roll call, please.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Open up the discussion session. Open up, Amy, anything? Yep, Jeremy?
Just real quick, so at the Solid Waste District, we passed a resolution not too long ago, allowing us to enter into negotiations with Conawas Scale System. So we had those negotiations, and we're very comfortable with them, and they're supposed to get their final pricing quote over to us sometime this week, so I'd like to have a resolution hopefully next week to go ahead and move forward with the replacement of those concrete scales at the district, so.
Good.
The initial conversations was that they were able, they'd be able to do this work over the weekend, and wouldn't impact traffic at all.
So they'd literally be able to totally replace them in a weekend?
They would start Saturday at like 12:00, and then be done. They would, there would be some minor things that they would still need to.
Sure.
Set up, you know, like on Monday, Tuesday, but the scales would be operable on Monday.
That'd be great.
Wow, that's awesome.
Yeah, so.
Really good.
Yeah, so, that was, that was a best.
Fantastic, all right, good, good, all right. Any other department head, elected official, John, anything? Okay. All right, discussion? Do you have anything? Okay. I did have in the pack, Scott and I had attended, the CCIO had a regional meeting over in Summit County, I think it was on Thursday, it was a long weekend, so it kind of all evaporates, but I did. But I did provide, we had some great presentations regarding the American Rescue Plan Act, as well as Senate Bill 52, I thought had some very good handouts. I'll just say, the American Rescue Plan, it seemed, was significant, this was Northeast Ohio regional area, and about every county is being very conservative-
Yes.
-in how they're spending this money, very slow to spend it. There's a few things that are, some of the counties, but others are still trying to figure out as to how we're doing it. I know there's some additional conferences and meetings going on. We're still waiting for the final from the Department of Treasury. I think everyone is just trying to make sure that they, obviously, they stay within the confines of the intention of the act, but also, not any hurry to spend the money, and that seemed to be about every county around. Some are having a more difficulty spending in certain areas than others. Fortunately, when it comes to broadband, most of the counties that were there have no idea how to expand to provide those opportunities at the county level, and are talking about going for RFPs, trying to find some way to do wireless. We're fortunate in this county to have Medina County Fiber Network and the Board Authority, where we're already doing it. So, I think we're very fortunate.
Well, and we're also fortunate that the ARP monies had much better deadlines than-
True.
-the COVID monies.
Yeah.
We had to be so quick with those. We can take our time with our-
Indeed. Indeed. So, all right. But that's all I've got. If there's nothing, we'll just go ahead. We'll recess, we'll go into executive session, but we'll be coming back out of that, and we'll be taking no other action other than adjourning. So, everybody-
Thank you.
-have a good day and a good week. Enjoy the weather.